I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for August 21st of 2012. I invite you, if you'd like to, to join us as we stand and Mr. Walter provides an invocation for tonight, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, thank you for allowing us to gather in this place tonight. Thanks for all the blessings that you've given us individually and as a community. Father, we ask your blessings upon the decisions that are made. May they be in the best interest of our community and, Father, may they be pleasing to you. And, Father, just thank you for all that you do for us, day after day, and thank you for the cross in Jesus' name.
May he. Did you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. Time for awards and recognitions. I'm going to take Mr. Lackey first. Ray Lackey from Operation Pride.
Okay, this evening, our award is a residential award, excuse me, a commercial award. It's Ashley Furniture Home Store, 1850 Scottsville Road. I have several before and after photos. That's a picture of the store that they just remodeled, the front doors. Here's a before photo. This was actually before the previous store coming in. And now, what I want to show you is the reason that they were nominated. On the left-hand side, as you're looking from Scottsville Road, they've got a great flowerbed to the left. In the center, by their sign, they've got a great flowerbed. As you know, we really like the daylilies here with Operation Pride. And then, you've got another flowerbed to the right side of the building. And the great work they've done on the outside of the building, there's a side view. And then, we also have a view of the inside of the store. This evening, I've got Paul Penton with Ashley Furniture here to accept the award. I'd like to have him come forward.
Thank you so much.
Is that George?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we've got George Schiff here. He was the contractor with the organization. Doesn't work. I'm going to let him step up.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. On behalf of Spencer Enterprises, which owns Ashley Furniture, it's a pleasure to receive this award. We appreciate you recognizing us for the work that was done. You know, when you think about moving to a new location, it's never an easy decision. But you know, when we thought about where we were on West Park and we thought about how we could better serve the community, and we saw an opportunity there at 1850 Scottsville Road, and we began to prepare and to make just preparations, and we knew that we wanted something very special. We wanted it to be very appealing on the outside, but most importantly, we want it to be very warm, inviting on the inside. And we believe that we have truly captured that, that's for sure. It is a commitment to Bowling Green. Little over $2 million was spent on this building as part of our commitment to Bowling Green. One of the great things about our company is we always strive to give back. And we're just happy that we can be a partner with this community and serve it. And we just want everyone to come in and see what we've done and how Ashley Furniture can just provide your home and make it very warm and exciting also. Mr. George, would you please come and say a few words, get our work on our building for us?
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much, Council. It's been a pleasure to work on this project with Spencer Group and Ashley Furniture. They have given us the latitude and longitude, enough rope to hang ourselves, if you will, but through the efforts of my visions as well as working with Sewell and Sewell Architectsors, who's here tonight with Matt and Nick Sewell, we were able to get a very contemporary look out of a salzier, for lack of a better term, rather 27-year-old dated building who needed lots of work and lots of love and lots of attention. Unfortunately, I wish Mr. Bright was here to witness this event. It was one of his last projects, and he very much was anxious to see its completion. Unfortunately, he did not make it. So, in his memory, we are very proud of the work that's been done. And I am very proud to work with the Spencer Group and Ashley. They have a very strong sense of commitment to this town. They're involved in lots of things like simply the Special Needs Foundation for children and contributing beds for those that don't have any. It's just a great, great company to be a party with, so thank you very much.
Where are you located?
We're located right here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. We are a quiet company. We've been associated as a property management company and general contractor. Our predominant customer is General Motors. We take care of everything at the GM Corvette factory and have been for nine years now. So, we've been through the highs and lows and the valleys and the peaks with GM. And thank the Lord you're still here and still part of Bowling Green. And we have a great management team that's very much committed to being there as well. And we're just very proud to work with them all.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.[367.31][367.31][applause]
Mayor, Commissioners, the only other thing that I would like to add this evening is that the first week of September, you're going to be seeing a public service announcement. We will be having a cherry award presentation out at Old Stone, and I'll be getting that out to you in the near future. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Fable?
Mayor, tonight's a special night for one of our senior managers who's going on to another life, and I'll defer to you for some kind words.
Kind words and Ernie in the same sentence? Okay, we can work on that. Ernie Goovis. Ernie Goovis has been with us since almost the time Billy started, that long ago, serving in many capacities in Parks and Recreation, but for the last many years as the Director. And the end of this month will be the end of his term, so we're going to be sad to lose Ernie, but look forward to his retirement or the fun he'll have in his retirement. And we're going to miss you, Ernie. He's a great job. 33 years, is that right? Good job. Thank you, sir.[435.53][435.53][applause] I'll put you on the spot if you have any comments that you'd like to make.
Come on up, Ernie. Tell us how you've loved every minute of working here with us.
It's not the character for me, but thank you. You know, I'm the one that's been blessed, truly. Joined the men's group of church a few years ago, and we talked about some things, and I just wondered, you know, why me? Why the good Lord choose me to shower these blessings on? I still don't understand, so will someday, but it's been my honor to serve y'all, past Commissions, past Mayors, and especially everybody in Bowling Green. I made a lot of good friends. My hometown, plan on sticking around, so I'll be watching, but hopefully in the comfort of my own home. But thanks for the kind words, and it's been a great, great time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ernie. Great job.[497.41][497.41][applause] Anything else?
Also, I'd like to add, Bob Jeffers, our Golf Division Manager, is all, he's not, I don't think he's here tonight, but he is going to retire also at the end of this month.
And congratulate him.
He's done an excellent job, and he too is moving on to another life.
And we'll congratulate him as well. Anything else under awards and recognitions? Do you have any comments for us this evening?
No comments, Mayor.
Now, this is the point of the meeting, or, excuse me, we have to do the approval of amendments from the August 7th, 2012 meeting. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. This is an opportunity that the city provides for any public comments regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, we invite you to the microphone at this time. Seeing no one, we'll begin with ordinance 2012-27. We have to have a motion to have this considered before we do the amendment, so I need a motion, please.
Let me read the title.
Sure.
Ordinance Amending Zoning Ordinance, Ordinance Amending Articles 1, 3, 4, 6, and 8, and dependencies of the zoning ordinance for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, as recommended by the City-County Planning Commission, with additional revisions by Warren County Fiscal Court. Sumo.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Before we continue with this one, the long and detailed discussion that we had last week was followed up with a meeting with members of the Historic Preservation Board, city staff, planning and zoning staff, and we worked through all of the proposed changes, left some in, deleted others, and they will be addressed in the next ordinance. But this first ordinance, we need to have amended. What we did was table Articles 2 and 5, which we thought encompassed all of the changes, but it did not.[645.58][645.58][laughing] Like I say, it was a long, long discussion, so we need to have an amendment, which I guess I will make that motion since they were the ones I submitted.
May we go through the amendments real quick?
Yes, sir.
At the end of the, I think of this ordinance, Katie gave you a proposed one with the changes. If you look at it, it's kind of a draft, but it's got changes. We added, excuse me, we added one more ads clause to try to set forth what we did. But the first change starts on page 22, Section 3.1, 3.3. The yellow marked line may include, that was one proposed change, small change there.
From May to, um, from shall to may.
Yes. The next changes go back on, kind of start on page 62 to 63, but they deal with the downtown commercial local historic district with the eliminations of numbers 4, 5, and 6 of prohibited activities. These are now being marked out. So, those motels and extended state facilities, commercial parking, and retail with drive-thru or pickup windows are deleted from this ordinance. And that's kind of followed up again in a few pages, pages 69 and 70, under number of Paragraph 4, driveways and parking areas. That whole section is being removed as well, and that kind of goes back to the previous section. And as the mayor said, I think everybody thought these were in Article 5. We talked so long last time, I think everybody was kind of tired, worn out, confused at the end. But what we need to do, these were the mayor's proposed changes, so if everybody's okay with this, we now, as the mayor said, we need a motion, second, to amend this one, to amend these changes, and then, of course, followed again by a vote on the ordinance once amended.
And this, again, is to make the two changes from shall to may, and then, to only in the downtown square district, to still permit, you know, our banking partners down there to operate with drive-throughs and parking and so forth. That's all that this change admits. We'll cover the rest of them in just a moment. So, I'll make that motion?
Second.
Second by Nash. Is there any discussion regarding the amendment? Okay, please call the roll for the amended.
For the amended. Then we'll follow up with another vote.
Amendment, thank you.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And now, we'll go on with the amended first reading.
Amended first reading.
Of the ordinance, which includes the county ordinance changes, or fiscal court ordinance changes, plus the minor changes that we just made now. And we'll talk about the remainder of historic preservation in just a moment. All right, I think I have a second motion, second, on that.
Oh, you need to vote now.
So, is there any discussion? Okay, let's, please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Okay, next, we have ordinance 2012-31, and we need a motion to remove it from the table since we have tabled that ordinance.
Some.
Motion by Denny and second by Waltrip. There's no discussion on the table. Pulling it from the table, so please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. So, now, we have it on the table for consideration.
She needs to read it.
Do we need to vote to consider it again since we brought it off the table?
Yes, she hasn't read it yet.
All right.
Ordinance Amending Zoning Ordinance, Ordinance Amending Articles 2 and 5 of the zoning ordinance for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, as recommended by the City-County Planning Commission, and as previously removed from ordinance number BG 2012-27. Sumo.
Second.
Motion by Denny and second by Waltrip.
And don't forget, the mayor talked about, but what's being proposed to you right now is the Planning Commission's recommendations, because that's what they recommended, that's what you have to consider first. But there will be some proposed amendments to those recommendations.
Does this include the historic preservation?
Yes. Now, let the mayor say.
We're going to talk about that. Now, we have to make them, make the amendment to the.
Yeah, we may want to discuss it first, what your amendment's going to be, and then vote on it if everybody's okay with your amendments.
Everybody fine? Okay. So, let's begin this discussion, and I'll start. Members of the Historic Preservation Board are here. There are basically three items of broad discussion, the first of which had to do with the composition of the Historic Preservation Board. And this is under Membership 2.5.1. The Planning Commission's recommendation came to us with striking the requirement that the members shall have, you know, training and experience and interest in that sort of thing in historic preservation. And if I understand Mr. Hunter correctly, the reason that was included was because they thought that there would be an expansion of the Historic Preservation Board to include members from perhaps Oakland or Smith Grove or whatever sixth-class city chose to have a historic district. When the decision not to have an expanded board was made, this was, I won't say accidentally left in, but left in. I don't think any of us had an objection with having people with an interest in historic preservation being on the board. I don't have an objection to that either, and I think the board themselves, if they'd like to speak for themselves, would like for it to remain in, because that's one of the keys that helps us continue with our certification as a certified local government in historic preservation, if I accurately reflected that. Is there any questions on that part of it before I go to the next one? The next item is in 2.5.2, which was the powers and duties of the board. And again, we all met there. I think probably the board's preference would be for those to remain in. I think what we're doing here in deleting powers and duties of the board under 6, 7, 8, and 9, by deleting them allows the board a greater arms-length transaction as they review processes that are certificates of appropriateness that are applied to them for appropriateness, or for review, rather. Let me start that over again, because I said it too, got confused. It allows them to have an objective review of those people who apply for a certificate of appropriateness. It just creates a distance from review as opposed to advocacy. It seems to take that tension or that conflict of interest out of the role. Again, we discussed that. I believe if they had their brothers, they would prefer to leave it in, that they understand the concept of separating those roles. Now, the duties themselves don't go away from historic preservation, but are not handled at the board level, but are handled at the staff level. Accurately stated that at this point, everybody? Okay. Are there any questions on that part? Yes, sir.
Are you at the, is that the end of your presentation before the vote?
No, there's one more.
Oh, okay.
And then, Jean has one.
I've got, I want to ask something when you.
About this?
About the whole.
Okay.
Packet.
And then, the last had to do with when somebody applies for a certificate of appropriateness, minor issues were handled in the staff role. And if the individual who made the application was not satisfied with the decision of the staff person, rather than it being appealed to the Board of Historic, or Historic Preservation Board, it goes to the Board of Appeals. And the Historic Preservation Board, I think, felt that that was kind of bypassing their role and overlooking historic preservation. In discussions with planning and zoning attorney, state law directs that and doesn't allow it to be a second level of appeal from historic preservation to Board of Appeals. It can only go to Board of Appeals according to state law. But the Historic Preservation Board has a role in determining what items staff will consider for staff approval. So, you know, what, they decide what is minor and for staff to approve, so that they will have a role in selecting those. Is that correct? Let me give the Historic Preservation Board a chance to comment if they had anything else to say with it.
I think we're good.
They're good? All right. And you, let's talk about historic preservation before we go to the next one. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to double-check with the Chairman of the Board, if she will please come forward.
I was going to try to spare y'all this, but you did this.
It doesn't have to be lengthy, I assure you.
Donna Wolby, Chairman of the Historic Preservation.
Yes, I had the pleasure of knowing her mom and dad and all the rest of her family for many, many years. I had one thing that I mentioned at our last meeting, and it's only one thing, and are we all in agreement, yea and nay?
I can say to the affirmative, yes, we are.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you asking.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was your prompting that we met, and it was a great discussion that we had to work through those issues so that we all understood, and we all operate from the same page.
That's great. So, thank you.
All right, and there's one more.
Let's have one small change on page 19, 5.3.3, the other temporary uses. We talked about that.
On page what now?
Page 19 of the attachment that's to it. It's in Section 5.3, Temporary Uses, 5.3.3, Other Temporary Uses. This talks about the temporary permit for temporary, or the permit for temporary events lasting less than seven days. But children, I met with Steve and his staff. I think once we understood the intent of this, I think we had no problems with it, but we didn't want to clarify the language, because, you know, one day, all of us are not going to be here, so somebody else is going to be interpreting this. So, we just wanted to basically clarify, I think we view it as a housekeeping measure, if nothing else. We just wanted to put some language in to make it a little clearer for us what this section was intended to do. Basically deals with temporary events that take place that occur for less than seven days on properties not zoned for that purpose. I don't think anybody thinks there's going to be a whole lot of use for this in the city, but the county apparently may have some, particularly for some of the banned events that show up on farms and places like that. All of a sudden, you have, you know, a public assembly taking place over a two- or three-day period on farmland that's not zoned for that, so there's ability to give a temporary permit for that to take place. So, that's what this section is designed to do. We just wanted to clarify the language for us. No substantive changes, basically just housekeeping for us. And I think Steve would agree.
Okay, then I think we're ready for a motion to include these amendments that we've discussed, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Second by Nash. Is there any further discussion? Anyone? Okay, we'll be calling the roll on voting on the amendments to be included.
The amendment to amend.
Just the amendments right now. There'll be two votes again, but we'll do the first, this is just a vote on the amendments.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. And now, our vote, unless there's any further discussion, our vote will now be on the amended first reading of what we took off the table.
Yes. First reading.
You know we're voting on, Joe?
No.[1437.41][1437.41][laughing] I sure don't. Probably amendment to the amendment.
First reading as amended.
First reading as amended.
You got, you need a motion?
No, I think we're ready to call the roll.
Yes. Denny.
I'm for it.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you to the Historic Preservation Board for their working with us through the issue. If there's any questions that we need to deal with in the future, please let us know, and we'll take a look at it. Thank you.
May I just say just one thing? And as all of you, as board members, know, we have to have these type of discussions from time to time, but it is not to be interpreted in any way that we want to discourage individuals from being involved on our boards and in our community. That is not the case. And that's one of the things that I had fun with here, because I wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page, and that way, we can move forward, and each one of us can do our respective jobs. But I don't want anyone, and neither of the four others want anyone to be discouraged from doing what is right, which is your responsibility and ours.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. All right, we're moving on to the next item, Municipal Order 2012-158.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Shannon M. Sales, Brenda Carver, James A. Adams, Robert L. Dean, and David E. Bell, and the appointment of Greg Allman to the Human Rights Commission. Sumo. Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Nash. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-159.
Municipal order approving the reappointment of Louis H. Burke, Jr. to the Board of Park Commissioners. Sumo.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-160.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Joshua A. Johnson to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer in the Parks and Recreation Department. Sumo.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Denny. Mr. Fable.
At the four o'clock session, Ernie Goovis correctly and aptly stated that he's thankful for all the great employees we have in Parks Department that helped make it one of the world-class departments we have in this country. We do that because we maintain our facilities very well. We're here tonight to continue on the tradition and to hire Facilities, Parks Facilities Maintainer. The incumbent we're interested in is Joshua Johnson. He came to us as labor in the Parks Department, and we sought fit to have this procurement only open internally, and he was adjudged to be the best candidate. I think Joshua is here.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2012-161.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Carrie G. Watt, position of Labor 2 in the Public Works Department. Sumo.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. Fable.
Yes, Mayor, we had an opening in the Public Works Department in the Labor 2 position. We had 57 applicants. We interviewed 11, and from that process, Mr. Watt was determined to be the best candidate. He has prior experience working with the school district, as well as other private and public experience, and we feel very comfortable in recommending his appointment. I believe that Mr. Watt has come tonight also.
Mr. Watt is here. Congratulations.[1715.12][1715.12][applause] Is there any discussion? Joe, you know he's related to Ashley, don't you?
Related to who?
Ashley. Ashley.
Ashley, our Ashley?
Yes.
I didn't know she had any relatives.
You hadn't been in the north part of the county, had you? All right, please call a roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations again.
If I may clarify the motion on that, was it Commissioner Nash or Commissioner Hill?
They were fussing at me, I didn't get it right.
Okay, so it was Nash, thank you.
Yes, it was.
It's one of those nights.
Municipal order two thousand twelve, one sixty-two.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand thirteen zero three for Cisco Smartnet Agreement Renewal from voice.net of Lexington, Kentucky, in the amount of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip.
The city operates in a multi-network environment and uses Cisco Smartnet to help us negotiate through those various networks with switches and wireless routers and a variety of other apparatuses. That all needs to be maintained. We went out to bid, as is our protocol, we had ten bidders. The lowest responsible bidder was, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, Voice. Lynn Hartley is here, if you have any questions about the technical aspects or the bidding part of this procurement.
Any questions?
That's not gonna hit my computer or anything, I just mean. Okay, thank you.
Please call a roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand twelve, one sixty-three.
Municipal order approving a contract through non-competitive negotiations with AT&amp;T Mobility under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of cellular service and equipment in amount not to exceed one hundred thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Waltrip.
The city is not unlike anybody who has a cellphone and is dealing with trying to find the best product with the greatest coverage and the lowest price. We've been on a evolution of change with, with mobile service in the city. As you know, we're going to voice-over IP for our fixed-based lines, and we're here tonight to ask you to use the state contract to utilize AT&amp;T for our cellphone service. With this recommendation, it's a desire for us to move to a whole different platform for cellphones. We feel it's time, based on a number of comments from you all on the dais, to look at iPhones. And so, we intend to incrementally move to the implementation of iPhones as a technology for, for the whole city. We put together a work group that took about a year to figure out what was best for the city, and we're here tonight to recommend to you that we go with AT&amp;T mobile phones in a state contract. Lynn, who has spearheaded the committee, is here, if you have any questions.
Any questions or discussion? Please call a roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand twelve, one sixty-four.
Municipal order authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant application with the Federal Transit Administration for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, federal transportation assistance under the section fifty-three oh seven program.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Denny. Mr. DeFebbe.
Mayor, with your courtesy, I'd like to ask Brent Childers come forward. Items nine and ten are in the same family of relatedness, and it'd be, I think, more efficient if Brent could just come up and give you an overview of both nine and ten at the same time.
I said Brent, Mr. Childers?
I think you accurately said his name.
Okay.
What'd you say, GM?
It's the first time for everything. This is a request for us to submit an application to the Federal Transit Administration for our fifty-three oh seven transit program. As most of you are aware, this is the GOBG transit program where we contract with Community Action to provide that service. Now, we are a direct recipient from FTA. Historically, we had actually applied through the state and submitted a long application. Now, everything's online, we get our money directly from the feds. That's what this one's for. The next one is actually to request a match of funds from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for two categories. State match, which is an actual cash match, and then a toll credit. And toll credit is a non-cash, almost like a write-down for a match. Under the FTA rules, the capital funds require a twenty percent match. This request from the state would do away with that twenty percent. Ten percent would be provided by the state in cash, the other ten percent would be provided in toll credits, so the city and Community Action would not have to provide that twenty percent match. That's the two requests. If you have any questions, I'll address those.
Any questions for Mr. Childers? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else? Please call a roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order two thousand twelve, one sixty-five.
Municipal order authorizing the submission and acceptance of a request with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for fiscal year two thousand thirteen toll credits and capital match for transportation assistance for the section fifty-three oh seven program in the total amount of thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Nash. Any further discussion? Please call a roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
I will say, if I may, we've had a number of these come up during the last little bit, and Cheryl Allen and Ken Meredith are here, out in the audience, just about every time. We appreciate you all being here. But I recognize Ken's granddaughter from Sumter County, Tennessee.
Galton, Tennessee.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. You look, you look a lot better with her, Ken.
She is on my Facebook page.
And I bet. Thank you all for being here, all these times, though. Appreciate it.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? The Western proposal to bring kids from the campus down to downtown, is that still on schedule? And are we, we're not involved in any kind of way, are we?
I'm not sure you can see me and hear me from back there. We're not involved in the operation of that. They did talk with us before. They made anything too official. I'm not sure at what point they talked with us, but they did ask us our thoughts on the matter, and it's coordinated so that right now, with the way our hours are operating, their evening shuttle downtown will not start until after the GOBG hours stop. And so, and they have made us aware that the public is entitled to ride the Western buses. So, we're gonna try to let the passengers know that if they need services beyond what GOBG can do, then they can still get where they need to go, or maybe they're able to get to their job, but not get home on GOBG. They'll still be able to maybe get home on the Western buses. So, the Western Transit staff have always worked very well with us, and we're in the process, we're very close to revising the routes. And we've had several meetings with Western staff, city public work staff, and others, highway department and all, to try to come up with the best routes possible, given the amount of buses, drivers, and funds that we have. And so, we, and one of the attempts that we've done is tried to even increase the coordination with the Western stops and with the new parking structures downtown and things. So, stay tuned, because that will be a public process. Did I answer your question?
Well, yes, and you, I, you made me bring up another question. I didn't know, and not that I should have, I guess, that this was gonna be an all-night process of routes. I thought it was just gonna be from Western to the campus, or both campuses, downtown, and back to the Western campus. I, I didn't know it was gonna be a route set up in, in the city. Am I the only one?
They're not. They do have a shopping shuttle that goes out to Walmart, but this is just for the downtown.
My understanding is that Western is starting two new routes, the, next week, when the full classes resume. One is an evening shuttle downtown, and that may be from six to ten. And then, certain nights of the week, starting Wednesday or Thursday through Saturday, is the later shuttle that runs. There's one that, the one runs from ten PM to two AM on Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays during fall and spring semesters. And then, the other one runs from six to nine-thirty. Does that help?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Anything else? All right, let's move. I think we voted on that one. Did we?
Yes.
Okay. Municipal order two thousand twelve, one sixty-six.
Municipal order approving Amendment Number Five to Lee Square Housing Project Agreement among the City of Bowling Green Housing Assistance and Development Services Incorporated, Live the Dream Incorporated, and the Housing Authority of Bowling Green relating to redesignation of building lots.
Second.
Motion by Nash and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebbe.
One of the creative things the city has done over the last number of years was the, creative in urban renewal, was the development of Lee Square, which involved a partnership between the city, Hands, and the Housing Authority. Under this original vision, it was to be dividing between the Housing Authority and Hands. That agreement's been modified a number of times. We're here again to modify again. The reason being is that, you know, demand creates the need for allocation of lots when there's an opportunity, and that doesn't always coincide with who owns what lot. Brent is here, and he might wanna brief you on an exciting proposal that's occurring with three-twenty-one Chestnut. Brent?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. At the last amendment to this agreement, Hands had terminated their interest in three-twenty-one. Historically, that had always been kinda set aside for them, because Lee Square had twenty-seven lots, can't divide that evenly by two, so we, the city has owned three-twenty-one Chestnut for a period of time. So, we had assigned them that interest to make it fourteen, fourteen. Last year, they terminated that interest, because there wasn't a desire to build. Since that time, actually coincided with the Housing Authority's request for these two additional lots, they've received some funding to build a disabled veterans home, a single-family for a disabled veteran, and they needed a place. They needed a lot. So, Deborah had contacted me to see if we had any property available. I'd worked with Gene on getting a list together, and this was one of them. So, now, a year later, they'd like to have the lot assigned back to them for the construction of this. The lot was chosen also because of its proximity to Graves Gilbert and the Medical Center, and just creates a better access for whoever this person is. They have not identified the person, I think they're still working on locating someone, but that's all done by Hands. So, if you have any questions as it relates to that, or the redesignation of lots as part of the agreement, I'll answer those questions at this time.
Any questions? Please call a roll. Oh, yeah. Please call a roll.
Denny?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And first reading, ordinance two thousand twelve thirty-two will be put over to next time, so this will be the last item on the agenda, Municipal Order two thousand twelve, one sixty-seven.
Municipal order authorizing a two percent cost of living increase for retirees and other beneficiaries of the Bowling Green Police and Fire Fighters Retirement Fund.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Denny. Mr. Waltrip?
This is, obviously, we had a, a discussion last time after the meeting, met with Gene Harmon and drafted, he drafted the municipal order, and it was decided that we would at least propose a two percent cost of living, cost of living to the retirees this year. And in discussions with, with Jeff Mizel, hopefully, we can have this discussion during budget next year, instead of leaving it until later in the year, so that we can get a grip on this, and, and for the most part, not make the retirees wait, so that they'll, they'll know. And we wanna make this retroactive back to August one, and I just wanna reiterate, through all this process, I think that the, every member up here obviously commends you for the service that you all have done, and I wanna echo that. Thank you all, everyone that's in that system, for what you all have done for the City of Bowling Green, and laid the groundwork for really what we have today. I appreciate that very, very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Other city retirees that were a member of another retirement program, that makes, did they get a COLA increase?
No.
No.
My understanding is either what this year, nor next year, I don't think.
So, members and participants in other retirement programs that are city retirees did not get a COLA increase?
Like the KERS and the CERS, my understanding did not.
And, may I, Katie Brandonberg, the, the great reporter with the Daily News called and asked a really good question this week of me, and I wanted to know if I were involved, if I was involved in this retirement system, and the answer is obviously not.
You're not old enough.
Thank you, Joe. That's the nicest thing you said to me. Feel it. But I thought that, and I did not think, until she asked me that question, that maybe someone would, would wonder, because obviously Bruce and, I think I told you that neither Bruce or I are involved in this retirement system at all, so, but that was a good question. Thank you.
Did you have something else?
Yes.
No, that's fine. Thank you for the answer to that question. As Commissioner Waltrip alluded to, this has been very difficult. Also, commend you all for the service you gave to Bowling Green. One of my goals when I was elected was to not make an emotional decision. The emotional side of Melinda Hill would say, yes, give you all everything you want. The other side of Melinda, looking at the numbers, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be voting no. Nothing against you all, but I'm looking long-range for the good of Bowling Green, Kentucky. The numbers spoke to me. I believe if we could only give you this two percent and that be it, I wouldn't have a problem, but it's gonna be compounding over the next years, and I'm concerned we're gonna put the city in jeopardy. So, thank you, but I will be voting no.
And, and I'll, I'll be echoing those comments. I made comments earlier, and I worked with, with a couple of guys there, won a different agency before they got downtown. You know, on the board, we have voted cost of living increases in the past. I guess voting from ignorance, I was not aware that the actuarial study was available to us all, and I've made that copy available to every, each of you, so that you'll know. We're approaching nineteen percent unfunded liability, which right now is, what, a couple million dollars. Continuing to provide a, what the actuarial table estimated, that if we were gonna assume three percent annual COLAs through the life of the, the table, it would end up being a five-point-two-million-dollar decision that we made here. This was set up as a straight-line annuity, where when you retired, you received X, and that was your retirement for then. We've been able to provide cost of living increases in the past. Again, I heard the, the phrase, maybe take a pause for a year or so to allow us to continue to contribute to the fund and bring it up to a, a more sound financial situation. My vote is based not upon trying to put any kind of individual in a bind, or not recognizing the, the good service that you've provided over the years, but in, in my, my view, and again, we all have different viewpoints, in my view, I'm helping the retirees the most by sustaining the health of the fund, which will make it there for you to the end. And, you know, you guys are my friends, like Lynn said, my heart goes out to you. If I could, if I didn't have to worry about money, I'd, I'd be making that, that decision on your behalf, but that's, that's my explanation for the, for the vote. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
You know, my comments there, the last time we met, I am sincere about the way I feel about these individuals, but most of all, about those widows that are out there that were married to both groups of these people, we're talking about policemen and farmers. You know, we took on that responsibility from day one, and we said from day one that we, the City of Bowling Green, was gonna take care of our retirees, prior to the new retirement program being implemented. They were our responsibility, the City of Bowling Green. We still have that responsibility, in my opinion, and as long as I'm here, I'll, I'm gonna vote on the side of the retirees, and... going to vote on the side of the retirees and that we, as a staff here, make room for those funds in the future. We have the tendency to make room for everything else and this is not no great big number in comparison to the amounts of money we spend or we put aside to match attracting new monies. This is our responsibility and we've got to step up to the plate and take care of it.
Anything else?
I kind of said all I'd say.
All right. One more?
Only other comment I have, and obviously I respect Melinda and Bruce's comments, we just don't agree. The issue of this $400,000 over the period of the, of the, of the life of the retirement for the remainder of the 43, this will cover, this $400,000 we have in here will cover this. Also, we're going to have to supply money to this fund each year and I echo what Joe said about the responsibility that we have and, and if you use the logic of looking at just strictly the data, not adding $400,000 or arbitrarily adding $450,000 or whatever we add to this each year, you still have the issue of these are people who, who we, commissions passed, have taken, took the responsibility and I think that, that we have a responsibility to take care of the retirees. The issue of another retirement system, again, that's their issues and, you know, it's a whole lot of different circumstances for that and we can't do anything about that, but we, sitting up here, can do something about this one. So, you know, the health of the plan, it's still there. Again, if we made decisions strictly on money, you wouldn't get another raise for 10 years or ever how many years it would be, but the health of the fund obviously is important to me, but I don't know, in some way, obviously, the health of the people in the fund is very important to me, so I will be voting obviously yes on this.
Anyone else?
One thing.
Yes, sir.
Actuarials, you can't argue with the mayor's position on actuarials. My argument falls down, I'm going to take care of you today. I believe that's what this vote does. Nobody's promised tomorrow. An actuarial table is, is a graph on a piece of paper and, and it's no doubt important and it should be involved in making decisions, but it's, it's, it is what it is. Thank you for your service.
Anything else?
I might say that I had the pleasure or displeasure of working with John Mike Sears back during 1968 when I was a little old rookie policeman here in Bowling Green and we've been buddies ever since, had the pleasure of working with his wife and he taught me everything I know and he didn't, wait a minute. He didn't go wrong.
Why would you besmirch the man's reputation like that?
No, no. He, he.
He didn't say he remembered.
No, he told him.
A good job, he did a good job.
Clearly. I'd like to point out that in 1968, I was not born.
Go ahead and rub it in, ma'am, I mean.
Please call a roll.
Yes, it's hurting.
Denny.
Yes.
Hill.
No.
Nash.
Yes.
Waltrip.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Thank you. Thank you for tuning in. We'll close the meeting here and there'll be no closed session. Sorry?
Your vote was?
No.
Thank you.